What do I want to do here? Call the Sparks City Council Meeting of April 27, 2015 to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Councilmembers Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt.
There.
City Attorney Adams. Absinthe.
He'll be back.
And City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation, we have Pastor Brad Dyrness, Sparks Church of Nazarene. Welcome Pastor, how are you? I see you went in conference with Christopher Darrow.
Yeah, we're in cahoots.
You guys should be good to go then.
All right, so good. Let's pray together. Father, thank you for a chance to gather as a community. And we recognize that there are many communities today that are suffering, especially in Nepal and places like that. And we are very blessed. And Father, we just pray for your wisdom for our council as they deliberate today. We pray that you'll help us to be the best stewards of the resources that you've given to us and the opportunities that are before us. And Father, we pray that you'll help us to be a reflection of your compassion towards one another. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you for those kind words Pastor. If you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ardina Perry, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have public comment. If you want to make a comment under public comment, please fill out one of these cards. And you want to speak now Ardina or on the subject?
I don't speak now because I may have to leave.
Okay. Come on up. Yes.
You've been telling me to sit down and shut up for 15 years.
Now I'm telling you to sit down and talk.
Okay.
You have three minutes Ardina.
Okay, I can't really see the clock, so just wait at me. I'm going to go ahead and read this. Can you, do I need a mic or can you hear me?
Go ahead.
All right. I'm here today to address a presentation from Washoe County Regional Animal Services. And I want to bring forth my concerns, which I have shared with all of you before in earlier correspondence. The problem with Y-Christ does not begin on Longley Lane. Those are good people out there. I hear a lot of complaints about animal control, length of time, da-da-da. It's not there. The problem on Longley Lane begins at night and wells. And I'm sorry, but that's just the way it is. The city of Sparks has always, sorry, I got a cough stuck. The city of Sparks has always kept the responsibility for our health and safety under our own roof. We have enjoyed shared services, but without consolidating. Our first consolidation effort was with Washoe County Animal Services. That's the first and only place where we have given up complete and total autonomy on a public health, safety enforcement issue. We might want to look at that. Animal control is an enforcement protection agency, the same as police and fire. It is indeed responsible for health and safety. And we must be about the humane treatment of animals while in our care with first and foremost protecting the public. What we have currently under county policy, again, not the employees on Longley, but under county policy is a $14 million adoption agency. We do not have an animal control agency functioning as that at this point in time in the city of Sparks, although we are paying for one. I am hoping that we will look at the interlocal, the PSA, which have not been honored since 2006, and make a strong effort to bring them into compliance, or seriously consider taking back our animal control. At this point in time, we have before us in the legislature, an attempt to extend the whole time on all animals. That's a net increase of almost $75,000 per year in a budget. We have seven cities right now being bankrupted by animal controls that have gone down this path. So it's a fiscal impact. When they come up and they show you the slideshow, and I'm going to give them a sneeze yet. When they show you the slideshow and say, "No, no fiscal impact," reach for your Dramamine people because you're getting a lot of spin, okay? There's a major fiscal impact, there's a safety impact, and quite frankly, there's a morality impact. Because these are living sentiment beings. I'm disgustingly enmeshed with my animals. I've been volunteering for animal control since I moved out here since 1973. I have never seen the level of abandoned cats, stray dogs, neglected dogs, hoarding situations. It's heartbreaking. We need to be responsible. We are the stewards of the animals. They can't decide, "I think I'll go crash by the river." Is that it? Oh, I was so excited, I thought I did it. I have four minutes left?
No.
Thank God. Ah, I was out of wind. Anyway, that's the deal. So if we can't get them in line, let's get them gone. Thanks.
Thanks Ardina, appreciate it. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda. And whoever makes the motion, if you would move to pull Agenda Item 8.6 as it is uncompleted, we need some questions answered before we act on it. So anyone else want to pull anything or Ms. Ratty?
I'm to approve the agenda with pulling Item 8.6.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously, Mr. Schmidt, excuse me, will be on the phone today, so we'll take that into consideration. Number six, approval of the minutes of the council meeting of April 13, 2015. Any omissions, corrections, deletions? Not looking for a motion, Ms. Bybee? Oops, I'm sorry.
I had one correction. I thought on when the group that came with the P-16 council to talk about the run for education, Sean McCaffrey was here, and he was not included on the list of who made presentations. So it's just a slight correction to that section in our minutes.
Okay, you want to make the motion with that correction?
Yes, I move to approve minutes from our previous meeting with the correction adding Sean McCaffrey with the P-16 council.
Okay, do you have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bybee, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the minutes as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay, number seven is announcements, presentations, recognition items. And we have first, proclamation for Older Americans Month. Is there someone here to accept that? Come on down. And I get to read it because I'm an older American. You're not old enough to accept this. All right, I'll read it anyway. Whereas the city of Sparks includes many citizens ages 60 and older, and whereas the city of Sparks is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives, and whereas the older adults in the city of Sparks have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals, young and old, by emphasizing the need to take action to safeguard themselves from unintentional injuries where they live, work, and socialize, providing information on avoiding leading causes of injury for older adults, falls, motor vehicle-related incidents, suffocation, medication overdose, and fire and burns, helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Older Americans Month. And we urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to our community. Thank you.
I'm Tanya Ramashetty, City of Sparks Parks Recreation Specialist. And on behalf of the city of Sparks, I would like to thank you for acknowledging Older Americans Month. And if you would like to look at the schedule for the month of May, we have it on our website on sparksrec.com on the senior section.
Thanks, Tanya, for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, we have National Day of Prayer. Someone here to accept this? Come on down, Christopher. Whereas the National Day of Prayer was established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1952 and signed into law by President Harry S. Truman, and whereas in 1988, the law was amended and signed by President Ronald W. Reagan, permanently setting the day as the first Thursday of May every year, and whereas each year, the president signs proclamation encouraging all Americans to pray on this day, and in 2005, state governors and governors of several U.S. territories sign similar proclamations. And whereas the city of Sparks recognizes this special day and joins with Americans across the nation in support of the National Day of Prayer, now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 7, 2015, as National Day of Prayer.
Yes, my name is Christopher Darrow. I'm a pastor here in Sparks area. And I just want to make sure you guys all know you're invited. It's on the Washoe County steps, 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock, pretty prompt to come in. And we have a lot of different pastors from the area that come together and it's a real special time. It's been going on for quite a few years on those steps, and they plan to do that again.
But that's the courthouse, right?
Yeah, it's, is that the court on the ninth? Is that considered the courthouse?
The old courthouse.
The county complex.
County complex. Yeah, county complex. And so thank you so much, so much appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, next we have proclamation for Arbor Day. I think Ms. Ratty's going to read this for us.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas Sparks is recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, now therefore Gino R. Martini, Mayor of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 24, 2015, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support effort to protect our trees and woodlands.
Is there somebody here to accept that, Tracy? I know you're not accustomed to talking, but would you say a few words for us?
Watch out. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for this. Every year, we do acknowledge Arbor Day, and we did have a planting here on the north lawn of City Hall on this past Friday. And it's always, the last couple of years have been cold and rainy, so it's kind of like baseball season when we plant our trees. It's cold, windy, and rainy, but we planted a couple of trees. So the kids from Lincoln Park came over and they named the trees, and they kind of take ownership, and we'll get to watch them grow. So we hope to plant the seed with our children, that they will be our next generation that care for our environment. Thank you.
Thanks Tracy. Okay, next we have Severe Weather Awareness Month. Someone here to pick this? This is a new one, I think. I don't remember this one.
I think it's new.
Whereas the Nevada Division of Emergency Management, Homeland Security, and the National Weather Service have declared the month of April as the Severe Awareness Month for Nevada. Whereas during Severe Weather Awareness Month, the NDEM and the NWS will dedicate each week to one of the top threats to our state, and will be disseminating information messages on social media platforms, websites, and press releases. The highlight of the month will be the First Annual Nevada-a-thon on April 30, 2015, at 10:15 a.m. in the State Emergency Operations Center. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Severe Weather Awareness Month in Nevada. The month of April is dedicated to remind Nevadans that severe weather is part of living in our state, and that understanding the risks and how to respond to them can save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Severson, Administrative Services Director. It was interesting when I got first notice of Severe Weather Month, they had Week 1 flood, Week 2 earthquake, Week 3 drought, Week 4 wildfire. And I thought, okay, that just about covers it. I think this year, we hit everything but flood. So it's not over yet, but I don't think that the weather's going to cooperate with that. But I did want to invite everyone, if you have time, to come down on Thursday to the State Department of Emergency Management. There will be a panel of five speakers to address how to understand which disasters can happen in their community, know what to do to be safe and mitigate damage, take action to increase their preparedness, and participate in community resilience planning. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, and then Ms. Bybee is going to read National Bike Month and Bicycle Safety Month as coming up this month. She'll be riding the, what's that?
Rover.
The Rover, exactly. The two-person vehicle.
I'm going to try.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, is anyone here to accept this? I'm sorry. Next here.
Okay, whereas there is a need to promote alternative forms of transportation, such as bicycling, in order to improve health and well-being, in addition to reducing pollution, traffic congestion, and America's dependence on fossil fuels, and whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve quality of life, boosting community spirit, improving traffic safety, and stimulating economic growth, and whereas bike paths and trails in the Truckee Meadows have great potential to positively impact our recreation and tourism industry by making the region attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the out-of-doors and healthy lifestyles, and whereas millions of Americans will experience the joys of bicycling during May through educational and safety programs, community events, or just getting out and going for a ride. And whereas the education of bicyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas May has been declared National Bike Month for each of the last 59 years, therefore Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 as National Bike Month and Bicycle Safety Month in and for the city of Sparks, encouraging all citizens to enjoy the benefits of bicycling, recognize the importance of bicycle safety, and be more aware of cyclists on our streets. In witness thereof, he is here unto his hand, cause the seal of the city of Sparks, Nevada, to be affixed this 23rd day of March, 2015.
Just real fast, Julie Hunter, Chair of Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance. This is the 10th annual celebration of Bike Week here in the Truckee Meadows. So we did one event a week this year. And we're going to pull it off. It'll be fun. We're going to start off with a Spoker Ride, May 9. That's to benefit juvenile diabetes. On Monday, May 11, we're going to have a Midtown event called Bike Around Bingo. So that'll be fun. And of course, we were all invited to the Third Annual Mayoral Challenge on the 14th. We're actually this year going, we're starting at Reno and riding to Sparks City Hall, where then we're going to do the Ride for Reading, delivering books to Lincoln Elementary School. So all the events are listed. If you go to bikewashow.org, you can see all of the events that are going on that week, and we invite you to attend however many you can. Thank you.
Charlie, not to worry. Last year, Bob Cachell fit in the Rover, so we'll get in there.
Well, I saw him present it, so I figured if Cachell could do it, I certainly would be okay.
You can bring a pillow if you want. Pillow on a.
I'd like to clarify that Andrew Clinger toed.
Absolutely.
So it's important who's riding with me.
Yes, we'll be in touch with you to get in the Rover. Thank you for joining.
Thank you.
Thanks ladies, appreciate it. Okay, next we have recognition of the Nevada Water Environmental Association's Wastewater Operator of the Year, Brett Warren, and Rookie Water Master Operator of the Year, Angel LaCroix. Mr. Drinkwater.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager. I'm pleased to be before you this afternoon with this item. And Mr. Kronk tells me, first time I've been before you where it doesn't involve heart-wrenching financial decisions.
Yeah, exactly.
No, a little bit of very brief background. The Water Environment Federation is a professional organization folks in our industry belong to that supports research and operational optimization and so on. And that organization, it's international in scope, has a state affiliate, and ours is obviously the Nevada Water Environment Association. Todd?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'd like to thank you also for the opportunity to recognize two of our outstanding operators. The national organization is split into regional and state organizations, and each year, this state organization chooses a Rookie Operator of the Year and an Operator of the Year. Awards for maintenance, collection systems, industrial waste, laboratory personnel are also given out at a statewide conference. This year, the Rookie Operator of the Year and the Operator of the Year were two of your employees, and I would like to introduce Angel LaCroix, the Rookie Operator of the Year for 2014 for NWEA. And I would also like to bring down to the dais Brett Warren, the 2014 NWEA operator.
Please say a few words.
Hello. I'm just really pleased to be part of an organization that does promote appreciation of their employees. And this is a great experience to be able to get this award with Brett and put it in our display case so the world can see our achievements. Thank you.
I'm really excited for the future of our facility in general. I think the next generation of operators and caretakers of wastewater that you'll see will be pretty impressive. So I think the future's bright. We're doing a lot of really great things out there, and operators like Angel and myself will be there the entire time.
Well, great. We appreciate, believe me, what you folks do out there because it's critical to the quality of life, obviously, in our area. So anyone else have any comments or anything? Congratulations.
Thanks again.
Okay, 7.7 Sparks Boulevard Corridor Study Presentation. I saw Amy here somewhere. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you, I'm Amy Cummins.
You brought the A-team with you?
I do. I have Deborah Goodwin, who is our Planning Administrator and also the Project Manager on this study. And I also wanted to point out Lauren Schillson of Traffic Works, who is our consultant for this project. He's also available for questions. And to thank John Erickson, who worked with us on this study every step of the way.
Oh, there he is. Did he actually help or hinder?
Absolutely.
You know, his.
He helped us a lot.
His nickname is Speed Hump, which is a, which is a traffic calming device, so I can see where he brings a lot of help to the team, so thanks, John.
He was a great support to the whole effort. And we worked on this though for about a year, so I'm just going to go through some of the key findings and input, and we welcome any input that you have. This is going to be going to the RTC Board in May for their input as well. Some of the key items that we looked at were traffic congestion. We know that there's a lot of traffic congestion on Sparks Boulevard today. We have about 36,000 cars at some of the busiest areas of that, and that's projected to go up to over 60,000 cars a day by 2035. So we do have some serious traffic congestion issues to deal with. The great opportunity that we have in this corridor are the fantastic bicycle and pedestrian facilities. They're not connected as thoroughly as we would like, but we have some great assets in this corridor today. We have a lot of growth that's expected to continue, and you can see some of the highlights here, as well as the Veterans Parkway that will soon be under construction and tie into the southern end of this corridor. So those are all issues that we looked at. We did a robust community outreach process as part of this corridor plan. We had technical advisory committee meetings, and I want to thank many members of City of Sparks staff who participated in those. We also had public meetings and received some great community input. And I'm sure it's no surprise that safety was really what was at the top of people's minds throughout this process, and improving safety, and we have some specific recommendations to do that, as well as improving the connectivity of the bicycle and pedestrian facilities. This shows you, it's a little bit hard to read, but we did some surveys at our community meetings just to gauge the interest or level of support for some different alternatives. So we showed just a couple of those here. We do have a roadway capacity widening in this, as part of this project, so we wanted to make sure we were getting input specifically on that. So we compared the travel times and asked whether people would support adding additional travel lanes to Sparks Boulevard, especially in that southern section. You can see here that overwhelmingly, that is what people recommended, that we take a look at when they looked at the implications for their travel time. We also had some different intersection improvements at Springland Drive, and we received input on that. And what you'll see here in the planning study is what was overwhelmingly supported by the participants at our community meetings. This map identifies some of the connections that we want to be making with the bicycle and pedestrian facilities. We want bike lanes the full length of the corridor, as well as sidewalks the full length of the corridor. The recommendations are divided into near-term, midterm, and long-term improvements. So here for the near-term improvements, these are the relatively more simple, straightforward types of improvements that can be made. So you can see this green highlighting here, these green sections represent sidewalk gap closures. So those are areas where we have missing links today that are relatively lower cost that we'd like to go ahead and get in our near-term plans. The circles, the sort of dark green circles that you see here, represent some other bicycle and pedestrian enhancements at intersections. In midterm, this is where you start to see some of the widening and larger-scale intersection improvements. The midterm would include the northbound widening, which is this yellow that you see here. That extends from about I-80 north to Springland Drive is where it would transition, as well as some intersection improvements, and that's what the blue circles represent. And in the longer term, and this is more in the 10-year timeframe, that would include the southbound widening on Sparks Boulevard, from again, transitioning south of Springland Drive, as well as some additional intersection improvements. So that is a quick summary of what's in the plan, and we do have flash drives of the full corridor study that are available, I believe, at the desk over here and some other maps for reference. So we welcome any questions or comments that you have for us.
Questions? Mr. Smith?
Thanks for coming down today, Amy. Did you see 35,000 trips a day on Sparks Boulevard?
That's correct.
Does per moving, occurring intersection, does that contribute to part of that? You're avoiding that intersection?
You know, I would have to double-check the traffic flows to see what is, what the connections are.
Okay, interesting.
Thank you.
Just ready.
So, at the end of the day, is there, there's bike lanes throughout the entire corridor, and is there a separated bike path still throughout the entire corridor?
Yes. Deborah, would you like to address some of the specifics on that?
We are looking at putting the bike, the path, all the way through, yes.
Okay. And then, can you just go into a little bit more detail in what those near-term bike and pedestrian improvements are?
Sure. Let me pull that map back up. And this includes an upgrade of the Vista Apartments Transit Stop and Crosswalk, as well as new pedestrian and bike bridge at Shadow Lane and some other spot crosswalk improvements.
Great, thank you.
There were a couple spots all along the roadway that there just weren't sidewalks there, so, you know, so that's what we're looking at with the closing those gaps.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Bybee?
So, when you said you're looking at it increasing to 60,000, is that probably direct result of the southeast connector and traffic that will be, is that the biggest reason for the increase as well as our growth, or is that not even factored into it?
That is a factor, but a larger factor is the regional growth that's expected. And you may have heard, EDON is working on a regional growth study, and we certainly have worked with TMRPA on the consensus forecast, so that's including the 100,000-plus new residents that we're expecting in the region over the next 20 years. So, that's generally the regional growth and residential, as well as commercial and industrial, that's driving that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Thanks, ladies, appreciate you coming down, give us an update.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, let's move on to consent items 8-1 through 8-5. Anybody want to pull one? If not, looking for a motion? Go ahead. Who was it?
Julia.
Go ahead.
Who's to approve 8.1 through 8.5?
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratty, second by Ms. Bybee, to approve 8-1 through 8-5. Any further discussion? See one, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously, thank you. Okay, let's move on to general business. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the fiscal year 2015-16 budget recommendations and fiscal items, including the city manager's recommendations for City of Sparks' final budget and, two, the proposed five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, city manager, for the record, and I have with me our financial services director, Jeff Kronk. You've received electronically a copy of the manager's budget recommendations, which includes all the details and the background information for not only the general fund, but the other funds, including redevelopment agency and our capital improvement plan. So, what I will do is turn this over to Jeff, and he will walk you through several things that are important to the council, specifically your financial policies, and we'll recap a couple of changes since the workshop. They've been very, very minor in my recommendations, and we'll go forward from there. So, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Good afternoon, Jeff Kronk, financial services director, for the record. I wanted to just read this first part, just so I get my dates correct, but what we're doing is presenting today the city manager's final budget recommendations for fiscal year 16. Today, we're asking the council to direct staff in preparing the city's final budget document for submission to the state of Nevada. City staff has filed the tentative budget for fiscal year 16, which was due April 15 of this month, and the city council will receive public comment on the fiscal 16 tentative budget scheduled for Tuesday morning, May 19, at 9:00 a.m. Immediately following the public hearing on the fiscal 16 tentative budget, city manager and myself will present the final budget document, which will be prepared based upon direction received today. The final budget must be filed with the State Department of Taxation by June 1, and during years that, when there's a legislative session in session, we have 30 days to file an amended budget, should that be necessary. If they take action, that affects the budget that we approved before June 1. So, that'll give us 30 days to do that. So, today, we're going to be looking for two recommendations, the first one, or two motions, I guess, the first one being either the acceptance and approval of the city manager's final budget recommendations for fiscal 16, or alternate direction to create the budget from there. And then, the second motion would be an approval of the proposed five-year CIP plan. So, with that, and then just caveat, stop me anytime, right? If you have any questions, we'll address them on the spot. It's better to do that as we go. I just wanted to do a very quick recap of our fiscal policies. Like Steve had mentioned, there wasn't a lot of changes, some very slight modifications, but no dramatic changes from the workshop that we had in February. And I just wanted to give a very brief overview of the general fund and then some of the other funds of note. We certainly won't be going through this entire document. There's a lot of good information in there. In fact, before I start, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the efforts to put this book together by our budget team, Stacy Hemmerling, Trish Sebastian, and Jen, I believe they're in the audience, and Jennifer Parmenter. They put in a tremendous amount of work to create this document. It really is a resource tool that we have throughout the year. Okay, that being said, policy number one, we have a fiscal policy-driven budget, and we have six of them that guide our decisions in the building of this budget. Fiscal policy one is the general fund ending, fund balance, and council has given us previously direction not to budget lower than 5%. At 4% is where the state starts, comes knocking, you know, and they can start asking questions and demand some answers from us. So, we try to keep that at 5% or higher, and this current budget recommendations includes a fund balance of 6%. So, we'll see that here, I'll bring that forth here in a little bit, a little bit more detail on that. Policy number two is our contingency budget. We have a budget in the city manager's recommendations of $1 million, like we had in February, no change there. I just wanted to highlight a little bit of the usage of that. So far, to date, of the $1 million that we had for the current year, fiscal 15, we've utilized $445,000 for the radios, if you recall doing that. So, there is remaining $555,000 for the rest of this fiscal year in that budget, should something happen in the next couple of months, and we need to access that. We've analyzed the rest of the possible needs, and there have been some questions that we may need it for, say, fire department overtime, but we looked at that, and we don't expect any more usage out of the contingency budget for this current fiscal year. But again, you know, we've still got a couple more months to go, so that's still an available tool, should the need arise. Policy three is to transfer resources from the general fund into the capital projects fund to help pay for infrastructure, facility, and technology needs, as identified within our CIP plan, and no changes from February's workshop, where we identified $1.9 million needed to be transferred from the general fund, so that remains the same. Policy four is the commitment of business license revenue to the stabilization fund, and really kind of keeping true to council's prior direction on this was to not fund this until we started seeing our revenues improve and a little bit more stable. And we have been thinking over the last year or so that fiscal 17 would be a likely time to begin, based on that direction we've received, would be a likely time to begin funding that, the stabilization fund again. So, as such, we have not included any funding for the stabilization fund in the recommendations for fiscal 16.
I've got a question, yeah? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, how do we have a minus $230,000 balance in that account?
That's actually a little squiggle, so it's approximate.
Okay.
It's not a minus.
Okay, thank you.
It's approximately $230,000.
You can see my confusion.
Okay, policy five is our personnel costs policy. The state don't exceed 78% of general fund total revenues, and we've been bouncing around in that 77% to 79%, and the city manager's recommendations is 79 point, I'm sorry, 78.9% for next fiscal year, which is slightly lower than the 79.2% that we reported in the workshop in February, generally due to a little bit higher of expected revenues since last time we talked. Fiscal six, I'm sorry, fiscal policy number six is related to our workers' compensation and OPEB liabilities, and we did receive direction from council at the workshop to begin the process to create an irrevocable trust fund, with the idea that we can accumulate, that'd be an ability to accumulate resources to pay off the OPEB liability as time goes on. The city manager is recommending a process whereby a resolution, might be an ordinance, but we'll provide an irrevocable trust fund document to council after the first of the year for approval to actually create the document, and then actual funding options would be presented to council sometime either at the fall council workshop or no later than the January or February workshop, where our plan is to give you several different options for alternate considerations. Okay, with no other questions, I think I just want to move right into the general fund real quick.
Question, Ron, are you still there? Do you have questions?
No, I just wanted to verify I heard correctly, the budget that you're planning is an ending fund balance of 6%?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes. And we'll see that here real quick. I just wanted to give you, I thought it'd be easiest if you turned in your budget book document, so I'm not sure how your page numbers work, but the actual budget document itself has page numbers, so if you turn to page 24, you'll see a one-page summary, and we covered this at the workshop, but I thought it would be beneficial to go over this again and just cover the highlights of the general fund. So, what you're looking on page 24 is just a one-page overview of the general fund that shows all the resources, high levels, this is very high level, but all the resources, including the revenues and transfers in, and then all the uses, which would include the expenditures and transfers out, and then the fund balance. This particular document shows the fiscal 13, 14 actuals, 15 budget, 15 estimates for the rest of this year, and then in the green column on the far right is fiscal 16 budget recommendations that we're presenting today. So, just very briefly, total, I'm sorry, total revenues, excluding the transfers, just looking at revenues, we're looking at an increase in the general fund of 5% for all revenues, and then in fiscal 15, followed by 3.9% in fiscal 16. If you include the transfers, that would be a 5.6% increase in fiscal 15, followed by a 4.3% in fiscal 16. The total uses would be that, the expenditures would be increasing 5%, 5.1% in 15, followed by another 5.3% in fiscal 16. But if you include the transfers in the contingency budget usage, we're looking at a total change in resource of uses, I'm sorry, of 2.1% in fiscal 15, followed by a 10.1% increase in fiscal 16, and I'm going to get to that here in a second. Then, at the very bottom of the page is our fund balance, and our fund balance for fiscal 15 sits at estimated 10.5% for the current fiscal year that we're expecting to end, and then next year is going to drop, at least in the budget, to a 6% increase. I'm sorry, 6% ending fund balance equivalent to our expenditures. So, you might want to ask the question, why did fiscal 15 fund balance increase to 10.5%? We budgeted 6.4. Well, that's what the little box down at the very bottom of the sheet is trying to answer. So, essentially, is breaking you down, again, in very high levels. What happened in fiscal 15 compared to what we had budgeted, and why are we ending up with a little bit higher fund balance from 6.4 budget to 10.5% actual? So, that breaks down to about $574,000 is what we ended last fiscal year in '14, a little bit higher than what we anticipated. We have a change in current year revenues of $774,000, so that's about a 1.4% higher number than our budget. And then finally, the total expenses and transfers was about 1.6% lower than what we budgeted for about $911,000. So, all three of those were to the good, so that gave us just under $2.3 million of additional resources in fiscal 15 compared to what we had budgeted, and that's what leads to a higher fund balance. A little bit less than 10.9, but even still. All right. Any questions? Because what I wanted to do is just go from there.
Questions, Ron? No? Okay.
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, I was hoping to go from there. I wanted to, and I'm not going to go through this in detail, but I wanted to take you to page 35. This is the cause of change. Again, this is focused on the general fund, and again, it's looking at, okay, so how did we change from a 10.5% fund balance in fiscal 15, budgeting 6% in fiscal 16? How do we get there? So, that's what page 35 is going to show you. It's going to walk you through all the changes, the causes of change, as we like to call them, and all the highlights. There's a little bit of detail in here that I'm not going to go over, but I do want to just give you the overall big picture, if you like. The very top box, you'll see on this page, there's three boxes. The very top box is the revenues, and essentially, from the revenues that we have that are ongoing, I call them our big three, you know, we have our property taxes, our seat taxes, consolidated taxes, and then our licenses and permits. From those sources, we're going to have additional revenue of about $2.2 million is what we're anticipating for next year. To offset that, we've got the expenditures. That's what the next two boxes show. In that middle box is looking at the salaries and benefits, and I just want to draw your attention to the first two lines in that section of salaries and benefits, causes of change, where we have a health insurance rate increase of 25%. You see that there? And includes the sick leave conversion. That's going to increase the expenditures for the general fund of about $1.5 million. Right below that, and we talked about this at the February workshop, where we reloaded the vacancy savings that we experienced in fiscal 15, and we're reloading that, assuming that all positions are funded for the full fiscal year. So, that's actually a place of wiggle room, if you will, you know, that's a place that we're hoping that the vacancies will still be there, but all things being equal, and if the vacancies are non-existent, that's a $1.4 million add, okay? Then the third box, if you keep just dropping your eyes down, is the service and supplies and transfers out. And the very first two line items there, where we're talking about a transfer to the capital projects for non-IT purposes. If you recall, we reduced our transfer for CIP purposes in fiscal 15. We're looking, we can't continue that, so we're looking to increase that as we presented in the CIP document at the February workshop. So, that increase changed it from a $240,000 spend in fiscal 15 to about a $1.4 million spend in fiscal 16. So, that's a swing of just under $1.2 million that's added back, added back into the fiscal 16. And then the last thing I wanted to draw your attention to was that line right below that, where we're talking about the seat tax debt service. The last couple of years, we've been paying for that debt service with unspent bond proceeds, so using the bond proceeds from that issuance to pay for itself. Those bond proceeds have been nearly exhausted, so we have to build the debt service back into the fiscal 16 budget. So, some of these things that you're seeing are the unwinding of the actions that we've done to mitigate some of the negative effects of the recession that we experienced over the last several years, so we're weaving that back in. So, just to, you know, just to recap, we've got $2.2 million of revenue.
Questions, yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lozen?
Didn't see it. Thank you.
The seat tax debt service, that is going to be, what, a two-year thing?
No, that'll be permanent until...
This is a permanent...
Yes, until the debt is paid off, which is going to be staggered. Some of it's going to be maturing in '18 and another chunk in 2026, if I have my numbers right.
So, how much matures in '18 of that $4.91?
Well...
What will we take off?
We can take a look at that at the debt review. Give me half a second, I'll find that for you. We have, just so you know, as I'm looking at this as well, we have a section in this book called Debt Review, and you can find that on, starting on page 86. And right now, our fiscal debt, fiscal 16 debt service for that is a total of about $1 million. Part of that is paid by the redevelopment agency, about 29% of the redevelopment agency, so the rest of that will be coming off, or that's the total of the two. The first piece of your maturity in fiscal '18 is $766,000. So, then that would roll back into that second issuance. If you recall, this is part of the refunding that we did just in this last year.
So, it'll roughly stay at that $4.91 till 2026?
A little bit higher. It'll go up a little bit more in fiscal 17 to the, of about, let me think now, we're adding back 486. It'll be a total of $730,000 going forward for the next two to three years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so in recap, we have $2.2 million of revenue, but it's offset by $2.9 million of those two payroll cost issues that I was talking about, i.e. adding back in the reloading, if you will, the vacancy savings, and then also the health insurance increase, and then also the CIP and the debt service. You add all those up, and there's your $2.4 million. That's why we're going to have a primary drivers of what's driving down our fund balance next year and getting us to that 6%. So that's the condensed Reader's Digest version. All right? Other funds, unless there was any questions on the general fund, but the other funds of note involve the redevelopment agency. I did want to highlight that very quickly. Of course, we're going to talk about this and do the same process for the redevelopment agency meeting, but it is worthy to note that in, for redevelopment area two, the general fund had been subsidizing that fund for the last couple of years. And due to the 10.2 acre land sale and slightly improving property tax receipts, we don't expect a subsidy either this year or next, or even going forward in that fund. The story for redevelopment two is a little bit better than redevelopment one. Redevelopment two at least has a better, you know, light on the horizon, where that $1 million of the debt that's being serviced by redevelopment two is going to come off the books starting in fiscal '17. So we just have to bide ourselves a little time, and then we'll be in a much better position. Redevelopment one is close, and the property tax receipts haven't been as responsive as they have throughout the rest of the city, but yet it's still being able to finance its own debt. So, you know, we're not looking at a need where we would need a subsidy from the general fund, but we're not ruling it out either. So we don't expect it for '16, but we're going to see, have to see how it goes. It's going to be, it's getting close, so.
Questions, Ms. Bybee?
Sorry, Jeff, going back right before your redevelopment, the general fund expenditures on those causes of change--
Yes.
The health insurance rate increase of 25%, the 1.5 million, that is the cost to the city of an increase in our insurance for current employees, correct?
That's actually the cost for the general fund.
And that is, that's to cover all current employees?
And retirees. It's the contribution that needs to be made from the general fund into the health insurance fund to keep it basically above water.
Okay, I guess my question is, is it comes out of our, I know because the retirees are getting hit with the 25% because they pay for their insurance costs, the cost for everybody who is a current employee and their dependents who are eligible, that cost is borne by the city coming out of our budget that we're approving now. So the 25%, the city, is that 1.5 million includes, I mean, are the retirees in that picture, or they're getting hit with that increase? And then we're paying the increase for current employees?
The one and a half million that you see there is just the general fund's portion of the increase. All the other funds, if there are employees that reside, if you will, are funded from other funds, those other funds will also be paying into the health insurance fund. So when we have a 25% increase, the way the mechanics work of it is that we attach it to, if you will, the employee's pay record. So once a month is how we process it, all the revenue comes in depending on who's working and where they're working. That way, we can divide it out amongst the different funds as a benefit to the employees, because that's really what it is. It's an employee benefit, so we attach it to each payroll, and so that when we process, that's how the funds actually move. It triggers the transaction to charge the specific fund, whether it be the general fund or any other fund that the employee happens to be working, super funds and so forth, charges that fund, and then moves that and creates it as a revenue into the health insurance fund.
So that 25% is a whole lot more than 1.5 million--
Oh, yes.
--just general fund's portion is, as well as the other funds? What is our total amount of cost for 25% insurance, health insurance premium to the city, to the city itself and to retirees, to people who are paying for dependents? I mean, what kind of number are we looking at overall? What does that 25% look like, ballpark?
If I can, let me--
Will you be going into this in more detail later?
Yes. And, well, it's kind of related. That's the place I was going to go next.
That's right.
So your question, your question is perfect timing. So what I wanted to do is take you to the health insurance fund, if you want to, which is located-- Hold on one second here, let me turn to the right place-- This might, this might help. I'll give you a second. Okay, so what we're looking on, looking at on page 59 is the financial information and just some narrative describing what this health insurance fund is all about. And specifically, just so I can, you know, set the stage of what this page is telling you, this is looking at the fiscal year 12 actuales, 13 actuales, 14 actuales, 15 budget, 15 estimated actuales, and then the fiscal 16 budget. So, and then looking, that's looking left to right, and then looking top to bottom is we're looking at starting assets where the revenues are expected to come in at, and then the expenses. So as you'll see, the revenues are broken down by city contributions, employee contributions, retiree contributions, retiree sick leave conversion, which is actually a city expense, but it's, when an employee retires, if they're eligible for this benefit, they can freeze their, a portion or all of their sick leave hours at a dollar rate, and it can stay in an account, non-interest bearing, but it stays at a value amount. And then as the monthly premiums come due, so to speak, we charge the city's funds and reduce that account balance. So, so those are still city expenses, but it's reducing the value of their sick leave conversion, if that helps. So what you'll see here, as far as the total revenues from all city contributions right at the very top, excluding the sick leave, we'll leave that aside for now, is increasing, including the 25% to, I'm just going to round it up to $9.3 million from 6.9 million. And that includes the 25%. Same thing on that retiree sick leave conversion. Let's see if I got the right line, which is increasing from $953,000 to just under $1.2 million.
Hey, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just looking at your graph down here on the bottom, Jeff.
Mm-hmm.
So we've been running a deficit since 2013?
Yes.
Expenses to revenues. Who's been paying that money?
Well, that's coming right out of the fund.
So we're paying for it out of the general fund.
All funds and other, so what ends up happening, if I can kind of set that stage a little bit, we've had, in fact, go back to fiscal 12, you'll see where we had a $3.8 million. So at the time, what we end up doing is we'll meet with the brokers and get an idea of regional trend spend, you know, how's the, you know, health of this whole industry going? We get an idea of what we can expect for our current plan, you know, our current benefit plan, get an idea of how our expenditures are going. Then we review our ending fund balance. And we look at that ending fund balance and say, is it healthy? Is it not healthy? You know, do we need to increase or decrease based upon, you know, what the brokers and the actuaries look at? So every year, we take a look at this. And then during the recession, it was decided to draw down that fund balance. So when you say who paid for it, essentially, it was a drawdown of that fund balance over the course of time, knowing, you know, full well that at some point, either two things had to happen. Either you reduce your expenditures or your revenues would have to go up, because we knew that planned spend would, is not--
Yes, so it was extra money that was paid in there. So last year, we had a negative in the assets, so that money came out of the general fund.
It was current year? So I don't have to--
Excuse me, 15.
Yeah, it was current fiscal year, is what we're expecting. And right now, we're sitting at a deficit. We moved into that deficit position last week, not unexpected. I knew that was coming. So we're expecting that to continue, unless we have a really good next couple of months, to be about $350,000 at a negative ending fund balance. We still have some cash in the fund, but only about, right now, as of today, about $785,000. So we're expecting to draw the cash down to about half of that. So we're getting very, very close to where we would have to start stopgapping that with the general fund with emergency transfers, usage of the contingency fund, if that fund goes into a negative cash situation.
So would you characterize this as kind of the bottom at this point? We can't, if we continue at this pace of increasing expenses, we can't keep up with the revenues.
The fund isn't in a healthy position financially right now, and that's one of the reasons we're recommending a 25% increase for next fiscal year. To do so, we would only be looking at getting that thing positive, call it $200,000. Kind of depends on how the expenses come to play. But at the end of the day, to have a truly healthy fund, you should have that, you should have that ending fund balance at least $600,000 to $800,000 at a minimum, because that's, that would be one month's worth of expenditures. There's a lot of flux in the monthly, and you can see it where some months run really hot, some months don't run as hot, and you'll need some of that cash flow for buffer. So what this is designed to do is to create a budget to get us closer, but unless expenses reduce, my fear is that the 25% may not even be enough.
Good, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
I have another question. So basically, with, even with the 25%, which is huge for the city, huge for employees paying for dependents, really big for retirees who just got hit with an increase in the last eight months, our options to rein in the cost of healthcare goes back to the cost of our plan. And how do we proactively look at what we're offering? And I talked to an employee today, I mean, a $200 deductible. I can't remember in the airline industry how many years ago it was that I had a $200 deductible. It was a long, long time ago. So the plan itself, how do we, you know, whether it's changes to the plans or something in today's, today's environment for healthcare, which is the, one of the single most important issues and problems for companies, for cities, for individuals, how do we, how do we address and look at some kind of remedy to address that? We can't, we can't continue where we're going. I mean, it accounts for 29% of our general fund expenditures. It's the biggest, driving the biggest cost increase is healthcare. And it is not just for the city sparks. I mean, it is for American Airlines, it is for, you know, everywhere, and other companies, my, you know, friends, family. You look at everything, changes that have happened to healthcare policies because of the cost of healthcare itself, and we're all living longer, and we're requiring more prescription medicines, surgeries, whatever it is, the cost has increased so much. We're not, we're not looking at, you know, how do we remedy that? And my understanding is, this body, the council, does not have control over, even though we have to budget it, even though it's our duty to do, to do this budget, that the actual cost, that our hands are tied right now as far as what we can do with the plan itself, and really making proactive changes to address the issue of healthcare. I mean, it's something that I don't have an easy answer, but I feel very, you know, my hands are tied of what we can do, because it's not okay, you know, for any of us, for the city budget or for retirees or employees, to have to look at a 25% increase is unrealistic when we're not doing anything on the other side. And I guess that's just a comment, that's not, you can't give me that answer, but I mean, that's just my feeling, and feeling very frustrated right now on what we stand and what we can do about it, and I feel like we need to take action, and I don't know what that action is, but I'm frustrated.
Thank you.
No questions?
Okay. Okay, with that, that was the extent of the highlights that I wanted to bring out. There's a lot more detail in here, and certainly, we want to be here to answer any questions, but I wanted to just draw some of those highlights to your attention. And with that, I think we're either open up to further questions unless Steve had other comments.
Okay, any other questions? Ron?
No, I'm good. I, you know, I just have, you know, one comment. You know, we have Cadillac, where it comes to insurance, and, you know, all the reports that I'm seeing on medical expenses and stuff, we can anticipate this conversation for the next five or six years. The national numbers are showing between 18% and 27% increase in healthcare over the next five years per year. That's the rate things are going, and, you know, without some control over the insurance plan itself, we have no control over these expenses, and we can have this conversation now every year. It looks like we're going to be having this conversation every year pretty soon.
Ron?
Has left the conference.
Okay, so what are you looking for, Steve, a motion to accept the recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, unless the council has other direction for me. If you approve what we've recommended today, then the finance department can do all the work that's necessary to finalize this budget in preparation for the June 1st deadline. Obviously, you'll have one more chance to have a conversation at the mandatory meeting in May. So if we don't receive other direction, we will march forward with this as the final version of the budget as it was presented today.
Mr. Lawson?
Are there any wage increases in this budget?
No, sir, there is not.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, or looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the city manager's final budget recommendations for fiscal year 2015-16.
Go second. Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve the recommendations of the city manager. Questions? Ms. Bybee?
I'm sorry, but--
With all the work that's gone into this, I appreciate, the whole budget as a whole,
but that 25% on the healthcare side of it, and my frustration with us not being able to do something about it, and I don't know realistically that we can, but I can't support the motion based on that right now. And I'm just voicing my frustration and my, I don't know that that will make a difference of what you all can do, but I can't support the motion at this time.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Bybee?
I'll just, you know, refer from a lot of retirees, and I'm particularly sympathetic to the plight of those retirees. I'm sure that everyone sitting up here is, because they're in obviously the most challenging of positions, because they're, for the most part, their income is not going to change while their expenses are. The flip side of that is if you change the plan, you change deductibles, you change those sorts of things, it's a different kind of cost that is borne by those retirees, employees with dependents. You know, it's hard to get to that magic formula. I understand the frustration. I absolutely hear you, and I can respect the decision, but at some point, we have to, we have to run a city, and part of running a city is approving a budget. So obviously, I will be supporting the motion. And, you know, we need to move forward, and we need to figure out how to work with our employee groups to get to a resolution that will make us a financially sustainable city and do that in a collaborative way. And I know that everybody's, everybody's working towards that, so I'll be hoping to hear that we can figure out a way to solve this, because as Mr. Schmidt said, the path forward doesn't look good, and that starts talking about people's jobs, and probably more importantly, it starts talking, well, not more importantly, but equally importantly, it starts talking about reducing city services that are already incredibly lean, and that's the part that is challenging. But at the end of the day, we have to, we have to run a city. So I respect what you're, what you're saying, but at the same time, I think we need to move forward.
Any questions? Seeing none, please vote.
Did you hear Ron? It sounds like he's there.
Ron, are you there?
Yes, I voted aye.
Okay, so it passes four to one. Okay. Thanks, gentlemen.
And we had one more, motion on the CIP.
No, we're, we're not going to--
We've reached our allotment.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the proposed five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2015-16 through 2019-2020. That's the five-year plan.
Ms. Bybee?
I say aye.
Oops, I missed one, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve the capital improvement budget. Need further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Nine point two, consideration and possible award of the 2015 Street Rehabilitation Unit Three, bid number 1415-013, and the amount for Spanish Springs Construction, amount of Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. John Erickson, Transportation Manager, AKA Speed Hump. The item before you today is a consideration for a contract with Spanish Springs Construction for the 2015 Street Rehab Unit Three project, where this is located. This is Bering Boulevard, Sorensen Way, Del Rosa, and so that's one of the streets that we're going to be working on. And then we've got one more here with Sycamore Glen, Springland, Boston View, and we had, or the engineer's estimate on the project was approximately $950,000. We received three bids on the project, ranging from the 891, 444, all the way up to $992,992. Because of the bidding, we feel that we've got a very good bid on this project, and staff is recommending that you award the contract to Spanish Springs. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John. Jeff Mattling for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move to award the 2015 Street Rehab Unit Three to Spanish Springs Construction in the amount of $891,444.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
We have motion by Ron Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve nine point two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Nine point three is consideration and possible award of the 2015 Preventative Maintenance Program, bid number 1415-016, to Sierra Nevada Construction, in the amount of $424,688. Mr. Erickson.
This item, again, is a contract to Sierra Nevada Construction for the 2015 Preventative Maintenance Program. Where this project is located is in the Foothills area, just off of Vista Boulevard, and then we do have some streets that are located in the Wingfield Springs area, as well as, and we're going to be putting a preventative series seal on the parking lots at Golden Eagle, and so all the parking lots at Golden Eagle will be treated at the same as these streets here. The engineer's estimate on the project was approximately $450,000. We received four bids on the project, ranging from the $424,688 all the way up to $615,030. The staff is recommending that we award this contract to Sierra Nevada Construction. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee.
I move to award the 2015 Preventative Maintenance Program to Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $424,688.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve nine point three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Thank you, sir. Nine point, nine point four is a presentation discussion, possible direction regarding the Washoe County Animal Services Changes to Washoe County Code, Chapter 55, concerning the Department of Animal Services. Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, city manager, for the record, and I'd like to introduce Cheyenne Cho, who is the Animal Services Director for Washoe County. I'm going to kind of step aside as soon as I mess up a presentation, and we'll go forward. As you know, and I'm not going to steal Ms. Cho's thunder here, we're regionally dealing with animal control. It was based on some voter action earlier in the decade, and so there's a lot that's happened with it, and there's been some change in management philosophy and direction and organization at Washoe County. And so with that, Ms. Cho has taken on the director's position in a new department, and so I will let her kind of explain what's going on and run you through the remainder of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. Cheyenne Cho, for the record, Director of Regional Animal Services, and my purpose today is just basically to present and provide an update to you on Washoe County Code, Chapter 55 revisions as we move forward as a new department, a standalone department, and as we make changes to code that was previously existing. What I'd like to do before I get into the new proposed code is to briefly provide a little bit of history with regards to when the code was adopted, and all of the staff time that went into collecting public input on the proposed changes that we are recommending. So Washoe County Code, Chapter 55, was rewritten to create a unified animal control ordinance that was adopted in June of 2005, in accordance with the interlocal agreement that was entered into by the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and Washoe County to execute the consolidation of animal services in the county. In accordance with the interlocal agreement and the consolidated ordinances, animal services have been providing, animal services have been provided on a regional basis for just under 10 years, as regional stakeholders were bringing these updates to you, proposed updates to you today. So with that being said, the Chapter 55 has not been revised or updated since inception in 2005. So in 2014, staff from Regional Animal Services, the manager's office, the DA, and on strategy, were put together a team to gather public input to, relevant to the Chapter 55 code revision. Much of the public input was used to develop topics for the four public meetings that were held, covering dangerous dog and exotic animals, commercial animal permit and commercial breeding permit, nuisance complaints, trap neuter and release, and the salutaneous topics. All in all, between the online surveys, public meetings, and data synthesizing, over 350 staff hours were dedicated to this project. In addition, since I came on board in January, I've been working with the new ADA in further revising and looking over those proposed changes, so we've spent quite a bit of time recommending changes and looking over these ordinance proposals. As we move forward in the prioritization of how we introduce the code revisions to the Board of County Commissioners for Action, we take into account many factors that are driving the need to update Chapter 55. There's been legislative changes that have occurred, some of the changes were, occurred two sessions ago, so we need to change Chapter 55 to reflect those legislative changes. We've had department changes, as I mentioned, Regional Animal Services was made a standalone department in 2014, and with that, there, we need to establish the department as a standalone and outline the rules and authorities and regulations of the department and the director. There's also some language clarifications, as you can imagine, since it hasn't been revised since 2005, there are some cleanups and some clarifications that we would like to make to the code. And lastly, as communities evolve, and needs evolve, and programs evolve, we need to change the code to reflect those changes and needs of the community. So moving into the first section of code that we're proposing, we were given direction, Regional Animal Services was given direction by the Board of County Commissioners in 2014 to work on a code section addressing the needs for feral cats in Washoe County. We needed to clarify the definitions of nuisance and owner, and so Regional Animal Services towards the end of 2014 worked with Nevada Humane Society to develop a code that outlined the managed care of feral cats in Washoe County. The way this program works, in a nutshell, is basically if a sponsor group or a 501(c)(3) would like to work with Regional Animal Services to handle feral cats, they would apply to be a partner, and then they would accept, spay, and neuter, and vaccinate, and return those feral cats back to a monitored colony. The colonies are then monitored by caretakers who are registered with the sponsor group, 501(c)(3) group.
Good question.
Yes.
So what does that mean, a monitored colony?
The cats that are in colonies are being cared for by a colony caretaker who will provide necessary food, water.
If I wanted to see a colony, where would I go?
If you wanted to know where the colonies were located, or...
Yes.
That would be through the sponsor group. They would be keeping records of the colonies.
So is there a building? Is there a piece of property? Is there something set aside for these cats to go hang out at?
No. The colony is wherever the cats congregate, so if there's a person that lives in that neighborhood or is willing to take care of the cats in that colony area, that's considered a colony, if the cats congregate together in an area, and they're being cared for. So that's the first section of, and that's a new section of code I failed to mention that we are adding in, proposing to add in. The next section of code is, as I mentioned, we are establishing the department as a standalone department, so we need to create, the creation of the department and the authority of the director. And also, in conjunction with that section of code, we are bringing forward some clarification on the powers and authority of an animal control officer, just for clarification purposes. So those two sections are being brought forward together. Some of the summary of the changes with regards to the establishment of the department is establishing the functions and operations of the shelter, field services, enforcement of laws and ordinances pertaining to animals within Washoe County, emergency response expectations, and then some of the summary of changes regarding animal control officer power and duty is to prepare, sign, and serve written citations in accordance with NRS and Chapter 55. The next section of code that we propose to bring forward is with regards to dangerous dogs, and this particular section of code, we have added some additional proposed changes to tighten up the restriction and the oversight of dangerous dogs in Washoe County, but there's also a legislative change that needs to occur within this code that will put us in line with NRS, in that dogs are not able to be determined dangerous based solely on the breed of dogs. So that needs to change within our code to reflect the change in NRS.
Question? Ron?
Yeah, I just have a question. I'm kind of jumping ahead of you here, where it says monitoring a previously declared dangerous dogs. Is that somebody that lives out of the county, and then they move in? How do we, are they supposed to report that they have a dangerous dog looking at them, or does, do the records come from somebody else?
It can come from another animal control agency, or if they move into Washoe County, they're supposed to report it to Animal Services, so that we can...
And in another county, they wouldn't even know these folks moved?
If it was within their ordinance that they had to notify them prior to moving from their county, then they may notify us.
But if it's not in their ordinance, we wouldn't know.
Right, yes.
Interesting.
Councilmember Smith, also, just as professional courtesy, the agencies do notify each other when they know animals are moving, even if it's not in their ordinance. So we work closely together with our other sister agencies.
Are there different restrictions for a dangerous dog? They have to be caged all the time, or they can't come out of the backyard, like most dogs?
Yes.
Is there something different?
Yes. We have outlined criteria, once an animal's been declared dangerous, then they have to abide by the set of guidelines and rules that we set forth in the ordinance.
Okay.
So, and some of those changes we are proposing that we change after animal's been declared that will help us further.
And can you follow up, maybe unannounced visits, to find out if the dog's actually being...
Absolutely, yes.
Just for last one.
I'm just wondering how you do that. I mean, I just don't see this, it's kind of a silly law to me, because if I move to Washington State and don't tell you, or I don't tell it, no one's going to know. I mean, it's kind of silly to me that, I mean, if, I don't know, it makes no sense. It's, you're monitoring something that is basically unmonitoreable.
Well, it won't happen at all if you don't try, though. Correct.
That's correct, yes.
I know it's not easy to monitor or whatever, but if you don't try, it won't happen for sure.
Correct.
Ms. Ready, I'm sorry.
So are there penalties? If you are discovered to be here with a dangerous dog and you didn't notify?
And let me go backwards, for the record, Bobby Smith, Animal Services Manager. Yes, ma'am, there will be penalties. There are current penalties right now if a person has an animal that has been deemed dangerous, and they fail to follow the regulations, they can be cited criminally.
So it's like sex offender notification, for lack of a better analogy, that, you know, they don't always check in, but if they're caught not checking in, then there's some consequences.
Pretty much, and, you know, the jurisdictions, we do work closely together, and when we find the person that does have that dangerous dog, we will issue them the violation. It's all about, we want to, we want to ensure the interest of public safety of our neighborhoods.
I have another question on that. Increase in insurance is significant.
Yes, ma'am.
In terms of costs, and are you familiar with other communities that have gone to that? I mean, is that a community standard? Is that a pretty normal level across the country, and do you see a higher rate of, than those dogs being turned in? Because folks just can't afford the $500 a year.
Are you referring to the registration fee, or the...
It's a combination of the registrations fee and the insurance, so your insurance cost is going to go up because you're going from 50 to 250, and then the registration fee has gone from, is it 25 to 500?
It's gone from 50 to 500.
50 to 500? So that does make the, the, if you've chosen to be a caretaker for a dangerous dog, it makes it quite expensive, sure. So are you seeing folks turn dogs in? Is this what's happened in other communities? Is this common? Is this a common approach?
I would say, right now, as we stand, dogs that are deemed dangerous, most of the folks are complying. There's an occasion where the owner looks at it and just realizes that they don't want to have the liability, so they're turning the dogs in. I don't, I don't foresee an issue with it. The person who wants to keep the pet, because it's their family member, I think will comply.
And if they turn it in, what happens to that dangerous dog?
Unfortunately, with a dangerous dog, they are euthanized, because you can't adopt them.
And then who gets to decide if a dog is dangerous?
The process goes to a hearing officer. A determination for a dangerous dog is an administrative process, so that would go to a hearing officer. If the hearing officer declares the dog dangerous, then the dog owner does have their due process right of appeals.
And that appeal goes where?
That goes to second, we're clarifying that right now. It's, I believe it's second judicial, judicial review.
So a judge can make a determination, and evidence can be presented, and...
Yes, ma'am. Goes through a full appeal process, and we actually work with those regularly with our DA.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bybee, do you have a question?
No, I was about insurance.
All right, go ahead.
So if I may, I just wanted to provide an overview of the proposed changes that we wanted to make in that dangerous. There's a few up there, and I have a few extra here. As we already discussed, increasing the liability insurance for a declared dangerous dog from 50,000 to 250,000 to increase the coverage provided to a victim who may suffer significant injuries. Dogs pending a dangerous dog determination, and dogs already declared dangerous, will not be permitted to move into, or into, within, or out of Washoe County without notifying Animal Services 30 days prior to. The license fee, which we already briefly touched on, we're increasing that from $50 a year to 500 a year to cover additional administrative costs to track dangerous dogs. Clarification of criteria to assist in declaring a dog dangerous. Clarification on who may adjudicate a dangerous dog hearing and declare a dog dangerous. Providing language requiring a dog to be kept safely contained in enclosure approved by Animal Services while pending a dangerous dog hearing. This is in the interest of public safety. And then again, the NRS, Section 202.500, a dog may not be found dangerous or vicious based solely on the breed of the dog. So in summary, those are the first four sections that we're proposing to bring forward to the Board of County Commissioners, and we have several more sections that we would like to bring forward. However, what we've decided to do is break it up into smaller parts, and so we're breaking, bringing these forward over the next month to two months. And then as we bring forward additional sections, we can bring updates to your council to provide the updates to you as well. And in addition to that, we are putting the proposed revisions of code on our website, so that the public may also review those changes and kind of follow where we're going with the code. So I would...
Mr., what's your name? Adams.
Adams. At your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, and at the city council's indulgence, I have a few things I'd like to present to the city council while the presenters are still up, and they can discuss whatever it is that I have to present.
Okay. Do you want to do that before or after public comment?
I'd rather do it right now.
Go for it.
Thank you. Counselmember, I have passed out a packet of information, and to let the public know what it is I'm passing out, I'll use this really fast. This has to do with the proposed feral cat presentation that you've heard today.
One more time.
Like this? And the CDC has declared these feral cat colonies are in fact a public danger and a nuisance. They have a tendency to spread rabies. For the past 30 years, many domestic animal link to human exposure to rabies has been capped. Now, this is a fairly recent study, 2013. 16% of the people in the United States that were exposed to the deadly disease were from cats. The number of feral cats vary from 60 million to 113 million. To be protected against rabies, cats need to be vaccinated once as a kitten, then a year later, then in about three-year intervals. And the problem that we have with this proposal from Washoe County is that we catch them, we may give them a rabies shot, but as the articles point out, very difficult to recatch these animals again. This is just a brief presentation that I put together since our meeting this morning on planning and zoning. There's a tremendous amount of information out there, both for both sides, but nevertheless, Florida Department of Public Health has declared that feral cats are not tenable on public health grounds because of the disease threat. American Association of Wildlife Veterans supports bans on feral cat colonies because of the risks they pose to wildlife and to human beings. The next article I gave you was reports of rabid cat attacks. So these rabid cats will actually attack people, animals, other cats. The Florida Department has two documented instances where a cat was hit by a car. A feral cat was hit by a vehicle, turned out to be rabid, bit the two occupants of the vehicle. And then they had a second incident where a cat actually came through an open door and bit the homeowner. Now, these people had to go through a series of rabies tests and complete with the shots to the stomach and everything else. Actually, what they point out is that feral cats face a prospect of a very unpleasant death. Not only are they left out in the wild and cold and the elements, subject to attacks from other animals, but they're subject to diseases as well. Rabies is just one of them. All that is set out in your article. One more article on the rabies risk to the feral cats. An opinion piece on rabid cats. And one other thing that I think that you as city council members should be aware of. The idea of feral cats in these cat communities leads to far greater numbers of cats and dogs in a community. Some of these communities have taken this all the way to managing the population, do not control the animals. Keep them. Housing. And what happens is that it places a huge burden on the economy of your jurisdiction. Here we have a stat. This just came out last week, Tucson. A huge TNR community that is going to completely no kill, no euthanasia. And as a consequence, you have an overabundance of animals. Those animals that were collected in the city then go to the county. The county then says, hold it. You gotta pay us more. And these are some of the practical concerns that we're looking at. Councilman Ross, and you asked what a feral cat community looks like. Here's some pictures of them. Typically boxes. I didn't hear anything about how we're gonna manage these communities, what they're gonna look like, where they're gonna be. I was... I heard that they can be anywhere where the 401(c)(3) outfit was to put them, but you can see that these are simply boxes with tarps that are secured by bricks, boards. By the way, this is one of the beach. Tracy, this is your marina. This is a public park. This could be a common area in a condominium development. And as elected officials, we have an obligation to protect our citizens. And this is a kind of class that will not be protected by law. And then this is a picture of a feral cat that's left out in the wild, defend for itself. So I think these cat communities really lend themselves to more animal abuse. Put the cat in the community, and I've heard that these communities' wild cat only lasts for about three years, a feral cat. What kind of a death does a feral cat go through? Do they catch a disease and die? Are they mangled by another feral cat, another dog, another animal? Some places have raccoons. We have raccoons that not only eat the food in these communities, but then attack the cats as well. The other concern I have, I have not been provided with any of the proposed statutory language. And I think it's premature for you to make a decision today until you've actually looked at that language. But this is, I think, an important issue that I wanted to get to you today on these proposed feral cat communities. I don't think it's something that the city as far as wants. I don't think it's something that the city council would endorse. And I think it's something that the city council needs to voice its opposition and concerns to the county commission before they enact an ordinance like this. Well, while we were talking about it, what are you gonna do with dangerous dogs? Now, I've been around the city quite a while. I'll put the city before we gave over animal control, we consolidated animal control. At that point in time, dangerous animals, dangerous dogs, were kept at a county facility. Now, that seems to address many of the issues that you guys have about what have you done to do with these dangerous animals? We're gonna put them in the same home with the same owners who were irresponsible enough to allow this animal to get out and attack somebody? Maybe the owners knew about the animal's propensity. We don't know. But if it's kept with the county, it's kept in their facilities, the owner of that animal will then be responsible for paying for those facilities, and it'll be far more... Allow for far more protection to the community than it will simply allow someone who already has a non-adjudged dangerous animal to keep that animal on their premises. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, getting next to it. Well, on the feral cat issue, when you catch them, you neuter them, and put them back into their colony. Do you do that because of NRS or because we're a no-kill facility?
Bobby Smith, for record, Regional Animal Services is not a no-kill facility.
Okay.
We are the county animal shelter. In accordance with law, cats are free roaming. There is not a leash law or a restraint law on cats within Washoe County, the city of Sparks, or the city of Reno. Therefore, the TNR programs are run by the nonprofits. In the last five years, our numbers of feral cats coming into the county shelter has been right around 4,000 cats. Prior to that, there was upwards of 10,000 to 12,000 cats. So through the efforts of our community groups that are doing this ban-neuter, we have drastically reduced the number of free-roaming cats. That's not to say that they're gonna reduce them all to zero, but they are working very feverishly to get the numbers reduced.
So tell me the difference between the county, which is you, and the no-kill facility we have?
That could be the SPCA, which is up by Par Boulevard. That could be Nevada Humane Society. That could be Pet Network, or any of the other smaller rescue groups within the Chucky Meadows area.
So then, what is... What's the difference in purposes or missions between you and them?
We are the law enforcement wing. We are the ones that go...
You go arrest the cats?
We arrest the cats. No, we regulate laws under NRS and laws under county code. We are the ones that go after the strays, the dangerous dogs, the cruelty, things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your proposal, we don't currently have the ability to have a 501(c)(3) spaneuter the cats and put them back out. And then that's part of the proposal is to change the ordinance so that ability exists?
No, sir. They do it now. What we're trying to do is put some regulation in so that we, as the jurisdiction, have some oversight. In the code, they will not be able to put it into... Trying to remember exact words, wildlife areas that Endow has deemed fragile, threatened, endangered, anything like that. So Endow has some say-so. They must have approval from property owners. If they're gonna put it like on a... Someone has a large piece of property and they want to have a colony, then they'll have to have approval for that. They will have to have approval to go across people's properties to handle a colony. So right now, there are no laws. We're trying to put in some oversight regulations so we can have some control over it.
I kind of see this like the wild horse issue in a way. And being a big advocate of wildlife, I've seen what wild horses do to water sources and wipe out an entire water source for that entire eco environment. So I'm a little leery of this feral cat policy. I'm not sure why.
And that's understandable, and that's why we did put the provisions in at the request of Endow.
All right. Thank you.
I do see this a little bit differently, and I do think that the results speak for themselves. There are feral cat colonies. There will be feral cat colonies if we put this regulation in. There will be feral cat colonies if we don't put this regulation in. What this gives is our Animal Control Services some ability to have some more formal relationships with some of these charitable nonprofits who are doing this work. They're gonna do it, and cats are free roaming by law. So they're gonna do it whether we want them to do it or not. I know a number of people who are passionate feral cat volunteers, and, you know, they're the ones that take the call at 1 o'clock in the morning, they go out, they trap, and they've brought the numbers down from in the 12,000 to the 4,000 range because their lease stopping the reproduction is creating more and more cruelty, more and more suffering because there's three times as many out there. So that's a good thing. Our entire approach to animals as a society is so irrational, but coming up with rational solutions doesn't always work. But at least in my mind, I'd like to give it a shot and see what happens when we have a little bit more oversight and, I think, then a little bit more knowledge where they are so that when things are getting out of control, that there's some ability to step in. And because you're just not... You're not going to stop these volunteers from supporting these cat colonies in our community. It's just, from an enforcement standpoint, it is impractical and not pragmatic.
Can you have some public comments? So let's hear from the people. And if one of you would maybe step aside so we can let somebody sit up there to speak. Mr. Simmons?
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Dr. Richard Simmons, a Nevada licensed veterinarian and vice chair of the Washoe County Animal Control Board. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. As you may or may not know, I've been very active in a number of local state organizations involved in animal-related issues, and I need to emphasize that my comments today are my own and do not represent the opinions or positions of any of those organizations, including the County Animal Control Board. In 2002, I was a vocal supporter of the concept of a unified Washoe County Regional Animal Services program, consistent of the cities of Sparks and Reno joining with Washoe County, and with the county function as the executive body to manage the program. I still believe that this concept is valid. However, I don't believe that by joining in the regional program, the cities gave up their interest in the operation of the countywide program. For this reason, I believe you should not endorse the program changes presented to you today, and to you and city staff have an opportunity to review the specifics being proposed in the change to the Washoe County Code 55, Animals and Fowl. And in addition, the specifics of the impending revision of the professional services agreement with the Nevada Humane Society, which will likely contain specifics regarding the responsibilities of the county vis a vis the Humane Society, and which could impact the services provided to the public by the county. As a specific example, as you've heard today, the feral cat colony has been preserved or proposed. And establishment of these colonies includes provision that the cats will be captured, neutered, vaccinated, and returned to the area where they were captured. And I would like to add, without any sort of informed consent of the residents of the area, which I think is a public disservice. As is stated in the background material for this agenda item, community concerns about this idea include potential negative impact on wildlife, potential spread of disease, which Mr. Adams has adequately described, including rabies, and destruction of property. What is not included in the background material is the fact that there is a Washoe County District Attorney's opinion that these kinds of programs violate state law that prohibits the abandonment of animals. A proposed bill in the state legislature to modify this law to allow for optional approval of such cat colonies by county commissions died in the legislature earlier this year. In conclusion, I urge you not to take any action about this matter until the specifics of any changes to the Washoe County Code, Chapter 55, and the Yidda Crass, Nevada Humane Society PSA, have been invited to you and the city staff for critical review. In other words, I'm not saying either go for it or not go for it, but I think you ought to know the details before you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Ms. Peggy Ru?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Peggy Ru. I live in Sonoma Two in Sparks. And I have been working with Washoe County Animal Services for about eight years on different topics. And all of these comments that I have today are mine and my opinions. First of all, the Reno-Sparks area is one of the most pet-friendlyest communities in the United States, and I think you should be very proud of that. It sounds like instead of trying to work through this, some people want to just euthanize anything that comes through the door. We are all good at something, and Washoe County Regional Animal Services has become an elite department and has now shown the county that it can work on its own. It... Over the years, they have perfected standard operating procedures and policies. They have enhanced community involvement and awareness. They have gone out into the community to show what they do offer as to education, awareness, free chip, microchip programs, spanneuter options, and vaccine clinics. Somebody always has to be the good guy and the bad guy, and they are usually deemed a bad guy. And if you've lived here long enough, you remember the Dog Pound on Mill Street, the wooden boxes that animals used to sit in overnight until someone took them out. It was one of the scariest things as a child that I remember growing up here. The facility, if you haven't taken a tour, is state-of-the-art. It is clean, it is up to date, it is polite, it is professional. Their staff, office staff, kennel staff, dispatch, and their field officers are something to be very proud of. The feral cat thing is just one issue, but I am a pet rescue liaison. I work with all of the pet rescues in this town. And whether you... And whether you help them do any of these projects, they're going to do them without you. They at least have gone to the extent of becoming 501(c)(3)'s charitable organizations where you donate to them and they do all of this work for free. And just so that Julia and Charlene know, 99% of them are run by driven women that work full-time jobs and run a rescue organization. And they abide by the laws and the rules of Washoe County Animal Services. Some of the bigger organizations may not because they feel a little more powerful. But the ones that they work with on the TNR are very respectful. And they hold them to the task of making sure that their determination letters are up to date. Also, with the dangerous dog thing, you don't want to just put a dog in a cage. It just makes it more dangerous and makes it more mean. But I think Sparks has enough to do. I don't think that they need to take on and create another animal services in themselves. But thank you very much.
Thanks, Peggy.
Do you have any questions?
Ardena Perry?
Thank you. For the record, Ardena Perry.
Am I on?
It doesn't matter, I'll talk loud. It covered a lot of what I was going to cover. I want to remind the council, anybody watching TV and anybody sitting back there, prior to our consolidation, Sparks did indeed have a cat leash law. I have a copy of the brochure at home. Cats were not allowed to roam. When we did the consolidation, that was changed, although each entity was told that nothing would be taken from their existing ordinances. I brought this to the attention of the county back in 2005. At that time, Cindy Sabatoni was the Animal Services Manager. As a matter of fact, we've gone through three county commissions on this and two county managers. So if there's anything you want to know about the interlocal or what it was like, and do kind of like not revise history, just ask me, okay? I've got 250 gigabytes on this. So we did have a leash law. I was assured by the county commission at that time that when these codes were revised, that would be put back in. So it's a bit of a slap in the face to go, we're not only going to put it back in, we're going to be, we're just going to turn your city into a cat-releasing area. Now, I share a love of animals with Julia. We don't agree on the way we go about loving them. But I will say this in closing. See, I can't see that, so Gino's just going to have to wave it.
You have a minute and a half.
Okay, here's the deal. Here's the deal with TNR. This cat can die of AIDS, this cat can die of torture, this cat can die of disease, this cat can die from the elements, this cat can die from a human kicking it like a football. Okay, I deal with this every day, every day. But this cat cannot die by lethal injection in a clean, humane, quiet environment. Do you want to ask our ACOs off the record how many ear-tipped cats they pick up off McCarran? Okay? I suggest that we consider giving these animals a right to a decent life. If they can't have that, then let's not subject them. In the 15 years that I've been actively involved with this insanity of TNR coming in, I have had people contact me with cats with bolts. You can imagine where. Cats with their heads stomped in. This is not an easy life. This isn't a pretty little life. And the pictures of the boxes on the beach are the tamest thing suitable to put in a public arena, okay? The tamest thing suitable. And so this is very impacted. It is not benign fiscally. There's a cost involved with this. And if you really want to find out about TNR, go on Craigslist. Because every day on Craigslist, you will see, "Have to move, I can't keep my colony." Can somebody take the colony at Neil and Peckham? Okay? We do not have a secondary, parallel population that's going to love these animals. We're asking the people that created the problem to solve it. That's not going to work. Thank you.
Thanks, Ardena. Okay, I'll bring it back to council fraction. I have no other public comment cards. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, is this one before us to accept your report? Isn't it the county that's going to finally make this decision? We won't be making this decision.
The county ultimately makes the decision. However, implicit in that agreement is the fact that we should have some, we do have some input, and we can certainly voice our concerns to the county before they make the ultimate decision.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Ratty?
Yeah, so, I mean, I do think that's a, it's a challenging structure for you all, as well as for us, because I think it's a little unclear what the role of the cities is, can be now that there's a consolidated Animal Services. So what I would request, that is, if you're, you are going to be inclusive and bring us information like you are doing today, that you would do it closer to the beginning of the process. Because there was a lot of opportunities for public input throughout the process of looking at, because I heard about it a lot, looking at the dangerous dog and looking at the feral cat colonies and those sorts of things. And I think it would have been helpful for those of us sitting up here, as well as the constituents who we all have contact with, that we had the information to be able to direct them to those public processes a little bit earlier in the game. As opposed to just coming into it at the tail end where most of that public process has been finished, and now some of our constituents are coming to us and we can't say, you know, here are all these meetings that you could have gone to if you, if we had known about it a little bit earlier. So I would just like to request that if we're going to be engaged, even if it's just for input, that we're engaged on, and you know you're going to be doing a significant process like this, not every little thing, please don't hear it that way, but a significant process like you've done with the outreach for feral dogs, or for feral cats and for the dogs, that we could be informed a little bit more on the front end. But other than that, I appreciate you taking the time to come today and bring us up to speed.
How long, when down the road is the county commission positioned to make a decision on this? How far, how long more do we have to go over this information?
We have a timeline set forth for each section.
So this is going to go section by section, or it's not going to be, you're not going to go section by section and vote all at one time for the whole thing? Yes or no, one?
No, it'll be section by section. For the exception of the ACO powers and the director, authority, and duties, we'll go together. So the feral cat code is, first reading was April 14th, second reading will be tomorrow. ACO powers and director will be April 28th. Dangerous dogs, first reading will be May 15th. May 9th, I'm sorry. And then we have further code down the road if those all go through the first reading and second reading.
So really, we don't have much action to do with feral cats that's just down the road. But go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
So we pledged part of our money to the Washoe County Animal Services. How much money is that? During this process, do we have any ability to review how much we're giving them?
One cent.
And they're changing, they're changing the contract that we agreed to? Do we have the ability to reconsider what we're giving them towards Washoe County Animal Services?
Mr. Driscoll?
There's an interlocal agreement that defines that Washoe County will provide the services and that they will do the best that they can do with what's there. As part of that, there was a dedication of one penny of property tax, which I'm not sure what that equates to now. When it happened in 2005, a penny for the city was somewhere under $250,000, and it was somewhere at or slightly over $1 million at the county level. So the idea was to move the one penny, get this large bang for the buck that allowed us to put money towards the new center and to maintain animal control officers and the operations of that.
Jeff, how much about one penny?
A little bit less than $100,000 right now.
Okay.
And so the intent here is to, within the interlocal that we have, is to work with County Animal Services, especially in its new design, and to be able to provide them input from time to time as a body, either through these discussions or as the council might provide direction to me to have communications with them, and then they're committed to bringing things back and forth. The idea is to have the best possible system that they can have to protect everything they're involved in, both inside the municipal borders as well as outside, to try to maintain ways for us to deal with the different social issues that are related to animals as we coexist with them. So I think at this point, what we're trying to do is get back on track with the new organization, work with them and understand from your needs as a council, what do you need from them? And then also from their point of view as a county department, what they need from us as one of the three partners to the interlocal agreement.
Sounds to me like we have no choice, so we'll just move forward and-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
The way the agenda is written today, it does provide for the council to either accept as presented or to provide some input. So if there is something that you're concerned about or something you'd like more information on or you would like to provide some specific direction, this would be the time and place to do that.
Well, for me, I'd like to know more about feral cats colonies because to me, that could be, where is it at? And what if development moves in there? Or what if there is an outbreak of some disease? Who handles that then? Is, that becomes an issue for our domestic animals? You know, so there's a lot of questions around that for me. And since it's being read tomorrow for the pass it, it doesn't sound like we have much choice. So I'll do whatever the council wants, but I'm a little disappointed that something as important as legalizing feral cat colonies wasn't brought in front of us because it's obviously happening in our community.
See, I think I had, Ms. Ratty, did you change your mind? And then Chad, did you have something you wanted to say?
I did.
And then Ms. Bybee.
You know, the whole, the interlocal agreement recognizes that each party is required to cooperate to the mutual advantage of the other. Bringing something to us today, when it's scheduled for a second reading tomorrow, does not necessarily evince any type of cooperation. The proposed Washoe County Code represents a substantial change and a dramatic shift in direction from the type of animal control recognized in the city of Sparks when Sparks's animal control was handed over to Washoe County. We never anticipated, nor did we ever agree to, a third-party 501(c)(3) to be part of the administration of this. Matter of fact, Washoe County may not have the legal authority to regulate feral or estranged animals because Nevada law vests that in the Nevada Department of Agriculture. I would ask that you hold off making, making any decision today until we are provided with the actual Washoe County Code language. If you are going to make a decision today, ask that Sparks be exempted from the new Washoe County Code provisions regarding feral cats and this dangerous dogs, and there's something about rehabilitation of dangerous dogs. I've been involved in the criminal justice system for almost 30 years, and we can't rehabilitate people, let alone animals. And if Washoe County doesn't exempt Sparks, or if they pass this tomorrow, I would ask that you seriously consider getting out of this interlocal agreement. Because it does not bode well for the spirit of cooperation to come here today and tell you about a controversial issue and say, oh, by the way, it's scheduled for the second reading tomorrow. There's nothing wrong with getting ahold of the county commission and saying, look, if you, if you're going to pass this tomorrow, we want out of this interlocal agreement. It is not good for, we, we were supposed to control animals, not give animals the right to run over our constituents' properties, spread diseases, attack our children, attack our constituents, and essentially trespass throughout our community. Thank you.
All due respect, Chad, I understand what you're saying, but we cannot do animal control for $100,000. I'm sorry, it just doesn't happen that we can do that. That's just my opinion. We're, we're up against it now without taking over animal control in the city of Sparks.
Then this is what happens when you let the county regionalize a Spark service?
Yeah, well, it's a-
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to add-
I have some other questions first. Ms. Ratty and then Ms. Bybee.
So just a couple, couple things. First of all, I wasn't here when Animal Services was regionalized, but we've regionalized a number of different things. And so I'll take Tamla as an example. For some reason, for the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, we felt the need to create a governing structure that had elected officials from all three jurisdictions on a board. Did the same thing for the flood project. But when we regionalized Animal Services, we did not choose to do that. So I feel like perhaps that was intentional when here at the time and that that was partially to say that we wouldn't necessarily have a role. I agree, in a spirit of cooperation, it would have been nice if we had been engaged earlier, and I think I made that point before. But I think we're misconstruing some of the information. The dangerous dog piece is actually strengthening the dangerous dog regulations. It's not weakening them. It's strengthening them. It's saying that you have to have a higher level of insurance. It's saying that you have to pay a higher level of fines so that we can pay for more monitoring. So I'm a little confused as to why we would be upset about making our community safer from dangerous dogs. They're there already. This exists already. We're making it more difficult. And I'm going to, just one more time, reemphasize the feral cat piece is there are free-ranging cats in our community today. They are allowed to legally be there. And making them smaller by trap, neuter, and release just reduces the numbers. I'm not arguing the point that they have a particularly good life. I'm not arguing the point that they may pose some safety risks to our community. But the practical truth is that they're there, and if we can reduce their numbers, that's a smart thing to do. Now, I have no interest in taking Animal Services over for $100,000. I don't have any interest in doing it for $200,000 or $2,000. But perhaps if we feel like there's, needs to be a better working relationship on this topic, we could ask the mayor to work with the mayor of Reno and the county, the chair of the county commission to agendize our approach to working together for Animal Services on one of our joint meetings in the future so that we don't get blindsided and aren't surprised somewhat late in the process. And we can, whether it's formally or informally, help staff, serve our community better by letting them know how we would like to work with them.
Ms. Bybee?
I guess my first question, just to be really clear on what we're actually doing or what action you're asking for today, would it be the actual approval of creating your department along with the clarifying position of your animal control officers and the, and the director of Animal Services, as well as the two codes you want to change, one for feral cats and the one for dangerous dogs? Is that the only four pieces of what you do that you're asking us to make a decision on today?
Yes, ma'am, that is the first four sections that we're bringing forward. So we're just basically bringing them to you. We'll bring you up to speed on those sections that we're bringing forward. There will be additional sections that we'll be bringing forward in the near future after these get through.
And does this, is this something that needs to be approved by all three entities? Or does the county, since they already have a second reading tomorrow, is it a done deal at the county level and you are just informational to the city of Reno and the city of Sparks?
It's informational to provide the updates to you on where we are with the revisions and the proposed codes that we're bringing forward.
And on your future, after these four, you've got more changes you're going to make. Are we always going to get the information right before, the day before it's heard by the county? Because that doesn't give us any time to give them, to give you our input, but also to share with the county who's making those decisions, maybe important concerns that we have for our constituents. It gives, it doesn't give us time as well as our constituents, you know, giving us the input. I mean, the timeline on what, the rest of what you're doing, I mean, are we looking at this for the whole thing? Or because of today, is it something that we would be, you know, have information more in a more timely manner?
Certainly. And I think that in the spirit of communication and collaboration, that the time is critical in bringing forward to both the cities of Sparks and Reno to incorporate your concerns and your constituent concerns moving forward. In the event of these four sections we are bringing forward, we initially sat down very early March- early March with Mr. Driscoll and the assistant city manager of Reno to discuss communications moving forward and how we wanted to bring forward these sections of code to your council in order to incorporate your input, your concerns, questions. And this was the soonest council meeting that we could get our agenda before you to review. So certainly, our goal was to get it before you prior, especially the feral cat code. But that is, unfortunately, a section that has taken precedence, that we're bringing forward first, because of the timing and the feral cat issues that we're experiencing.
And has Reno council already been briefed?
Yes.
So you've already met with them, and they've given you their input?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, well, just one final comment from me, is let's not forget that our constituents, our Washoe County's constituents too, and a lot of them maybe have been, had a chance to talk with you during your meetings and so on and so forth, but at least I would hope that's, that's what it was. Mr. Smith, had something maybe?
Well, I'll try to make a motion if we're done. I'd just say that I move to accept the report with no recommendation from the city of Sparks.
Go second. Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Any questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, did you, Schmidt, did you have something? I apologize, I forgot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was questions I want to ask. That's okay, the motion's on the table. I just, I would probably want to just change the motion if we could do to make a recommendation that we meet with the county and the city of Reno on how to deal with the animal control issues. You know, it's been a problem for years, since 2005, with enforcement and other issues. Maybe this is an opportunity to come together on how to deal with this as a joint group. I agree with not making any recommendations on the item at hand, because of the fact that it really doesn't, it doesn't matter whether we say yes or no. It really doesn't matter. The county gets to do what they want to do with it. But I think that the communication piece and the management piece, this is, this needs to be worked on, and so maybe I would add some motion to make her figure out a way to go ahead and put that in the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
May I just give you a little bit of information before you finish your motion? This is Bobby Smith again, and the city manager. Part of the stand-up of the department as an, as an individual entity within Washoe County was to also create an advisory board, okay? We're going through these first steps, getting the director's position, the ACO powers clarified, and down the road, we will be coming to both cities and the county to put an advisory board together, but we'll have one of you folks on as a mouthpiece, per se, for your community. So that is something that is coming down the road. Wanted to make sure we informed you of that also.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor, and I think, Mr. Driscoll, you've received direction without having it put in the motion of what to do, maybe get together with the county and the city, and let's further discuss what the process might be here?
Yes, sir. I believe that I have clear direction on take the step forward, so we would want to know what they're proposing with what was just said, and then also with what I've heard here and the discussion between the three partners, and at what, what level we should do that, and how that should be accomplished. So, we'll work that through, and I'll provide some information back to the council.
You okay with that, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the report, make no recommendations. Everyone understand the motion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, 9.5 is a first reading.
Bill number 2691, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 9 of the Sparks Municipal Code to Define the allowable container size for consumption in public areas, providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of bill number 2691. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, May 11, 2015. Agenda item 9.6 is a first reading.
Bill number 2692, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 9 of the Sparks Municipal Code to Define the permitted hours to use sound amplifying equipment during special events located in Victoria and Square, providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is first reading of bill number 2692. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, May 11, 2015. Okay, planning and zoning. Ms. Melby is up. PCN 1501, Consideration of and Possible Action on a Request for Alternative and Final Approval of an Amendment to the Marina Village Plan Development Handbook. Go ahead, Karen.
Feral cats.
I have no idea. No, no. I'm allergic.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council. I'm Karen Melby, senior planner. Before you today is a consideration and possible action on a request for tentative and final approval or amendment to the Marina Village Plan Development Handbook. They are requesting to allow greater flexibility in the types of height and design. This request is by LandCap Sparks LLC. The vicinity map that I've put up on the docuCam, I've outlined in red the area that is the Marina Village Plan Development area. This is Lincoln Way, to give you reference, and this would be the Marina Lake, so this property is on the lake. The applicant is requesting to amend the Marina Village Plan Development. The proposed amendment allows the Marina Villas and Marina Square, which this is Marina Villas and Marina Square's down here, to increase the maximum height of stories to five from four, but they will be maintaining the maximum height of 70 feet, as stated in the current handbook. The new architectural elevations have been provided in the Plan Development Handbook, along with the new site plans. The amendment does not change the total maximum area for the commercial, residential, I mean, restaurant or office and residential number of units. It maintains it at a total of 416,000 square feet. The proposed amendments are to facilitate the completion of the existing unfinished garage building, which is this structure right here. The staff finds and planning commission recommends that the tentative handbook, they find it in compliance with the plan development findings, it does not change the nature of the plan development. The amendments facilitate the completion of the Marina Village as a mixed-use project. The amendment would provide the developer the opportunity to change the number of stories from four to five while maintaining the maximum height. Excuse me. The proposed changes are intended to restart the development at the Marina Villas project, which would, has been stalled since 2007. Given the substantial investment to date in this project, this prominent location of the Marina waterfront and the blighting influence of the unused four-story parking structure, it is important to the community that the, that it's, that we facilitate the completion of this project with undue delay. This also is, before you today is a final handbook. Staff finds that the handbook does not, the tentative handbook does not vary the proposed densities, does not vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential, does not reduce the common open space area. There is no increase in the floor area, and there's no increase in the total ground floor area. Therefore, it's staff and planning commission supported our recommendation that the final handbook is in compliance with, substantially in compliance with the tentative handbook. Based on these findings, staff is recommending, and planning commission recommends approval.
Questions? Okay. Mr. Smith?
Karen, did you say that...
Going from four to five stories.
That's correct.
The height doesn't change.
That's correct.
How does that happen?
Actually, the applicants are here, so I think they might be able to better address that. David Dolls...
He moved, he moved on, he's over here.
David Doll is here.
The garage is not, the garage is not getting taller, just...
No.
Just to wrap around.
Just to wrap around.
Okay. Come on up. Come on up.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Dean.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Dean Hillard with the development team, David Doll and LandCap. Just a real quick background, the project has been totally recapitalized with new equity partners that we've worked with for fifteen, twenty years. They're out of Southern California, but Dave and I run the local development operations. So, this is what we're looking at right now. You guys can see that, it's the old parking structure, and that is going to stay. But what's going to happen is, the new building wraps around it. It's called a wrap type of construction. So the parking structure itself sits behind here, so you won't see it anymore. So on all four sides, you're going to see a new building. The reason we wanted to amend the handbook was, it was quite dated. I think the original handbook was, what year, Dave?
2008.
2008, the original. So things have changed as far as colors and design, and a five-story element is now possible at a wood-frank construction. So, there was a seventy-foot height on it in the original handbook, and we had taller roofs and ceilings and things in the units, but we can still maintain that seventy feet and get a five-story building, to answer your question. And what we didn't want to change, and that was the materials on the outside, rather than doing all wood siding, we're bringing in a mix of siding, some metal elements, some stucco elements, to give it more variety and articulation and design, so it's one of the biggest reasons the handbook had to be changed. And the color theme was changed. We also intend to repaint that blue, the three-story building at the lake, and flow into the same style and theming, so that's going to change also.
Questions?
Here looks nicer than the garage.
Yeah, don't you think? I don't know. Push me further.
Could you, could you do us one favor? Maybe just bring it right up here?
Sure.
That way the people on TV could see it, if you just face it straight, turn it around the other way.
Okay.
And put it up on the desk, maybe Karen, you can hold it up or something? That way the people on TV can see exactly how nice that's going to look out there.
I have a question on the, my understanding of the project is, each floor has its own parking spaces, so what do you do with that extra floor? Where does that parking go to?
There's actually five floors of parking.
Oh, I thought there's only four floors of parking. So I was mistaken. Thank you.
Okay, and questions? Ms. Ratty.
And so then, this building is all residential?
Correct.
And so, do you also control the, you said that you were going to update the three-story building that's currently there?
Correct. Yes, that one is mixed-use. There's multifamily in the top.
Right.
Off is a restaurant on the second, and retail on the ground floor. That's staying that way.
And it's been challenging to keep tenants in that building?
It's going to be a lot better once this goes next door compared to the parking structure. And the whole thing's improving, obviously the economy has improved. It's been, it's been a rough few years, so...
Anticipating some good changes there, though?
Big time. We are, we're getting calls already with anticipation of this. We just have a website, go to sparkmarina.com, and it's 210 units. We think it's going to be a fabulous project for the city, going to improve the area.
And timeline?
Yes, timeline.
When are you expecting it?
We needed this to happen today. We're actually going in for administrative site plan review next, and we want to go full steam ahead as fast as we can. The land, everything's been purchased, with finance and all the architecture and engineering, obviously. We did, this is the one we now architect, that created this product called Humphreys, brought him in to finish this project, so it's, you know, these are the tops.
So, under construction by...
We're targeting it September, October. I'm hoping September days more realistically sometime.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so open to public hearing. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, now bring it back to council for action. I think this is Ward Three. Mr. Smith?
I want to see it up tomorrow also, so hurry, okay? I move to approve the tentative and final request for an amendment to the Marina Village Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 15011, adopting findings PD-1 to PD-21 and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report. Now, this second part of the motion about the bond, is that your recommendation also? No bond?
Correct.
Because the request includes final approval, the planning commission does not recommend that the city council require a bond at this time, as stated in NRS 278A.490.
Go second, Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 11.1 PCN 15011. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith, did you have something?
I don't think you do.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Aye.
Go forth and go.
Passage unanimously. Thanks, everyone. Okay, comments from the public? Anyone in the public want to speak? Comments from the agency and chief administrative officer, Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some announcements to make. The following positions are open and due to a resignation. The Sparks Planning Commission is looking for someone to serve the remainder of a term that runs through December 31 of 2017. The appointee would be eligible for reappointment for additional terms. Applications for this position will close, have to close the business on May 12, 2015.
Who resigned, Steve? I'm sorry?
I'm not sure. Didn't say.
Yeah, who resigned? Ah, okay.
Also, in addition to that, Mr. Mayor, I have other positions. The following committee appointments are available. Two appointments to the Sparks Civil Service Commission will expire on June 30 of 2015. Each appointment is for a three-year term. Two appointments to the Sparks Recreation Commission will expire on June 30 of 2015. Each appointment is for a three-year term. And there is one appointment to the Airport Authority Board of Trustees, which will expire on June 30 of 2015. The appointment is for a four-year term. For this position, there are requirements for the Board of Trustees to include experience in aviation, business or tourism industry, experience in finance or accounting, or other qualifications that the appointing authority determines are necessary for appropriate or carrying out the duties of the board. These positions will expire, or the applications will be open until June 1 of 2015. So persons that are interested in serving on this, on any of these committees, should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. You can click on City Services on the webpage, then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, and then click on Fill Out the City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We talk about this continuously, and there's nothing we can do about it except ask. And I'm talking about the Health Benefit Committee, that is solely run by the people that actually benefit from, from the benefits. I think that that's the fox guarding the hen house, and I'd like a formal request from the city manager to change the makeup of the community, of, for the committee.
Got that, Steve? Yes, sir. Anyone else? Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I could add on to that, is that we also work with the city attorney's office to see if we need to hire outside counsel to work with that issue.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Comments, anyone else?
I support that.
Okay. Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
Agency members Lawson, Smith, Martini, Bybee, Schmidt.
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
And Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Looking for approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by agency member Martini, seconded by agency member Smith. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passes unanimously. Approval of the minutes of the March 23 meeting?
Madam Chair.
Public comment.
Oh, did I just say I'll pass a public comment? I'm sorry. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment?
Any public here.
Sorry about that. Moving to, thank you for catching me. Item number five, approval of the minutes, 5.1.
Moved and approved. Second.
Moved, motion for approval by agency member Smith, seconded by agency member Martini. All in favor?
Aye.
Was that an aye? Councilman Schmidt?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Item number six, Report of Claims and Bills Approved for Payment and Appropriation Transfers for the Period of March 5, 2015 through April 8, 2015.
Can you confirm?
Got a motion. Got a motion from agency member Lawson, seconded by agency member Smith. Any discussion? I guess I said we'll pass discussion the last two times, too. Anybody have, can I?
Just stop.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So, we do have a...
Jeff Cronk, Financial Services Director, for the record. Same process. We have, the tentative budget has been filed. We're going to bring it back for the public hearing on May 19, immediately following the city's. So this is the same process. I really don't have anything new to present regarding the budget recommendations for Redevelopment Area One and Two that's different than what was presented at the February workshop, and then also relating to the hazardous cleanup that's already been brought before this council. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward, so I just would entertain questions if there's anything. Yes?
So we don't have, we don't know how much the mitigation is going to cost for the hazardous cleanup. Has it started? I know they've gone on initially. Is actually cleanup starting? What is timeline and what is cost?
We'll probably defer to someone from Community Services. Look, lo and behold, one shows up.
For the record, John Martini, city engineer.
Mr. Ornellis and I, right now, are reviewing the proposed mitigation plan. There is a cost estimate included. I have a number if you'd like to know. It's going to be about $150,000, most likely. Whenever you're digging up a plume, if you will, you have to chase it a bit, so going to hold to that number for now until we know more.
But that would be coming out of this year's budget?
If we get the, yes, it'll be encumbered in this year's budget, if you will, as soon as we get an approval from either NDEP or actually our cases with Washoe County, when they give it the thumbs up, we can contract.
And so since today's item is the budget for the redevelopment agencies, the impact on next year's budget would be a lower ending fund balance?
Yes, we included $120,000, rough estimate that we had at the time, in the budget piece for redevelopment Area One. Also knowing that, you know, that would bring us down to a fairly low fund balance and anything over and above that kind of play at how the property taxes actually come in, may have to be funded out of the general fund, anything over and above that.
John, is there a timeline on, kind of a estimate on when it would be completed?
There is not at this time, no.
Okay. Any other questions on the redevelopment agency budgets? Looking for a motion.
Will you approve?
Second.
Motion from agency member Smith, seconded by agency member Lawson. Any discussion? Councilman Schmidt, do you have anything?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Sounds like it's unanimous. All right, so we'll not make the same mistake twice. Comments from the public? See none? Comments from the agency chief administrative officer or agency members? All right, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Will moved.
Second.
Excuse me. Yeah?[1266.62]